The Pledge of Legions. Olivia, when you're ready, please leave us.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
Aldag?
Here.
Griffin?
Here.
Hubbard?
Here.
Michelle's? Uh, Schlaf?
Here.
Semafaro?
Here.
Kio?
Here.
Scheid?
Here.
Okay. You have a forum. Item C on the agenda is approval of minutes from our city council meeting from September nine, twenty twenty four. Is there someone that would like to move the minutes?
I'll move the minutes.
Moved by Dan, thank you.
Hi, second.
Second guys, Adam, thank you. Dan, any thing in the minutes that you wanted to? No, thank you, I'm fine. Adam?
No, thank you.
And the members of council say?
I do have a question on page five, it looks like. Under M two new business, sending a letter to city residents with information. So it says motion, uh, et cetera, with the language that is included in the letter put on the table. I just know there was discussion made about uh, when that information was received and it was stated a couple of times, well, that's being included in the motion, so is there, um, would it be justified to include that letter, the information from that letter in these minutes? Cause I guess there's no other record of what that motion.
Yeah, cause that was, the letter really was the motion, you're right.
Right.
I don't, I don't, I don't mind if it's attached, it's good, it's a question.
I'm just saying, if somebody wants, somebody wants to know what the full motion was, if the full motion included the language in the letter, I think that needs to be in here.
Yeah, because the full motion, for instance.
Okay.
Motion is better with the letter.
And I guess I also wonder too, it, it must be standard then, that if there is a motion but doesn't receive a second, we do record that?
I, I, I typically do.
Okay.
Good questions.
Any other comments on the minutes?
Please call the vote to approve the minutes. With that one addition, letters of motion and adding the motion.
Yep. Um, Aldag?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Schlaf?
Yes.
Semafaro?
Yes.
Kio?
Yes. Thank you. Motion carries. We have no prearranged participation. So down to non-arranged participation. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak as a citizen this evening? Is there anyone online that would like to speak? So please use the raise hand feature. Okay. We have no non-arranged participation at this time. Does anyone have any conflicts of interest to declare? Undeclared. We're down to item G, approve of the agenda. Joe?
Uh, moved we include the agenda.
Okay.
Second.
Second by the way, thank you. Might assume that we've all the information that's in the supplement. Any discussion? Justin, please call the vote to approve the agenda.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Aldag?
Yes.
Semafaro?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Schlaf?
Yes.
Kio?
Yes. Motion carries, thank you. We have no public hearings this evening. Under my communications, we have our upcoming media list. Are there any comments on the calendar that's in the packet? See none, we'll move into our first report. Our Public Services Superintendent, welcome Tim.
How's your day tonight?
Good, you?
Good, thanks. So two weeks before spring, answering portions of your get me to know. A couple things out.
Zach? Uh, out of curiosity, how many gallons a week are the new trees getting watered?
Oh, three hundred.
Not each? Not each, oh my god, yeah, I hope there will isn't.
No, we do tomorrow, we have usually fill up three hundred gallons and then each, those are, I think it's holds five gallons each one.
Okay.
Which I'm over.
There was a comment somewhere in the packet about the rapid flashing beacon and the timing being too short. What, what, what did we actually end up setting it to and so we, we different from the, forget what you measured it at. Jamie, what?
I think it was over fifty, fifty.
That's how I was thinking, fifty seconds is what I was, okay.
Yeah, we, 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 we dropped down, down to thirty-five and, um, uh, Mr. Stocker, who's the crossing guard there, said that, that he doesn't feel safe, um, be- being in the road when it go, when it stops flashing, which, um, is happening to him on a regular basis. I, 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 we've reached out to, to, to Dan, um, and, uh, asked him to, to increase by an additional ten seconds. So it would go up to forty-five.
Zach?
With the crossing guard that he literally had the stop sign in his hands and he's in even a controlled intersection where the light turns green and he's standing there holding a hand or maybe with what's a few. So yes, the power, any crossing stop in front of the law is there.
Do we have any update on the other crosswalk on Dan Hoey? Either of the two, I guess, I've only measured the one.
Well, yeah, I, I thought the follow-up question was, is there a way to make it programmable?
Dan said they're individually, but that's what he told me. They have to get, they have to program it through wifi, cause that's why we need to go do it. But as far as put them on the same loop, you're saying?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm saying that I thought the question was, could we program it like for school days and school hours, it's something and then, and then, you know, weekends and others, it's not something different.
I, 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 I don't think they're that smart.
Yeah. I talked to Dan about that, he said, listen, you have to come up programming this stuff.
Okay, thank you for answering the question.
Yeah. So did Dame Dampridge or an engineer decide what these times need to be, or is this a city council decision?
So they, the, the, it, it can be a city council decision, I mean, we can, we can ask city council to, to set the timing.
I'm not asking that, I just wanted to know if there was a professional that does this every day that knows what needs to be set up.
Yeah, so O, O H M, um, their traffic engineer, uh, said that it could be as low as I, I wanna say it was like tw- twenty-five seconds.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I appreciate the comment that he doesn't feel safe in the intersection, then I would just say then for consistency's sake, I think we need to evaluate what's going on at other intersections because as Zach has pointed out, he has the added assurance that he is in the intersection, holding a stop sign. And before a rapid flashing beacon, that's all crossing guards had available to them. And I agree, standing in the middle of an intersection is unnerving regardless of what additional, um, features are available to you. So I guess if we're going to afford a crossing guard who has a stop sign, who is an adult in the middle of an intersection, a longer rapid flashing beacon for his safe perception of safety and security. I think we should also afford that on Dan Hoey Road where we have two rapid flashing beacons that are not monitored by an adult with a stop sign. So I think somebody needs to do an additional study there, because like I said, when I crossed it, I pushed a button once and I crossed and it turned off, you know, the second I crossed, and I understand that at school stop and start times, you likely have groups of children, and I would, my guess is, that's in some sense, the, the least dangerous time for the, the beacon to turn off because there is a group of children in the middle of the street, or an adult with a group of children in the middle of the street. So I want to respect people's perceptions of their own safety and I want to extend that then to other children in the community, I guess, in other locations.
That one, you can push the button in, in the island too, right? On Dan Hoey?
I don't think.
Or is it just on either side?
Either side. And I believe that there's one in the middle.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Anything else? Nope, thank you. Thank you. We'll move on to our Community Development Manager Report. Good evening, Michelle.
Good evening, Council, how is everybody this evening?
Doing well?
Excellent. Okay. You've got my report in front of you. Do you have any questions for me before I go into, um, my updates?
Zach?
Uh, it's related to the trees.
Okay.
Related to the trees. Uh, what were the criteria for the selection of those species?
I'm sorry, say it again, please.
What were, what were the criteria for the selection of the species? The trees. It's on the consent agenda, but I'm not pulling stuff up, speaking like that, so I'm trying to ask it to you now.
All right, I don't have the consent agenda in front of me and I haven't looked at it, so, um, when you say the trees, please help me understand.
The consent agenda includes, uh, tree planting match program. And it lists several species.
Okay, so, thank you. I apologize for not being prepared for that.
It does? Yeah.
Am I looking at something wrong?
Says hackberries. Couple varieties of hackberries. Yeah, it's on the application form. In a consent. Oh, I, i- i- in, in, in the newsletter? Oh, maybe, uh, maybe in the newsletter. Yeah, that, 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 that isn't, that isn't, uh, a consent item, it's just, um, Okay, well, I'll ask about the newsletter then, sorry, it's, it's all kind of jumbled in the same area. That's okay. I, I mean, and, and, and that would be in a free time to, to, to ask about.
Is this the draft one, or is this the follow-up?
It's, it's whatever you said.
I haven't sent anything to it, that's why I'm wondering.
The, 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 that is probably, probably the last year's, not before.
Okay. Okay, yep. Okay, can I bring this down?
Yep.
All right. So then we put out our RFP for, um, uh, for tree planting, we always list species that we will be, um, they're the ones that we presume, uh, presumably will be ordering from our contractor, so they can give us prices. Um, excuse me, a number of these have changed, um, uh, but they're, but they're still the basic species that we try and get. Um, the, what we try and do is look at, um, it's not scientific. What has been planted in the last few years? Um, uh, how can we make sure that we get a variety of trees that are appropriate with the, um, uh, obviously with the conditions within the community? So, uh, one of the biggest factors is the width of the Boulevard Island in which a tree can be planted, so if we're talking about newer subdivisions in some instances, those, those, uh, tree lawns, if you will, are only five feet wide, that's really the limit. You're not putting a swamp white oak or a maple tree, or even a sycamore tree, that's gonna get huge all the time and the root system cause the, the sidewalk to, uh, keep, so we try, we go for smaller or the medium sized trees. Um, if we, we also always have, um, you'll notice the service berry and eastern red bud, those are trees that don't generally get over twenty feet tall, and we like to have, um, that in the inventory in case we have to do any replacement of trees, your overhead wires. Excuse me, um, uh, hot hornbeam, hackberry, uh, both species, the hackberry, um, are native, somewhat, somewhat native to our area. Um, the horse chestnut is a wonderful tree for large, um, uh, tree lawns. Um, with the exception of the little nuts that fall, but oak trees are wonderful and they have nuts, so, or acorns. Um, ginkgo is a great tree, they're slow growing and in the right conditions will last
That's all.
Yes, centuries, um, uh, but we always only do male.
I, a, a couple of comments I have heard, um, the, the hackberry generally requires a lot of attention to keep it, uh, healthy canopy. If it doesn't receive that attention, it will fall apart in heavy snow or ice or heavy wind. And I don't believe we have the capacity to do rigorous regular maintenance, so I probably recommend we discourage folks to take that off the list. Um, the hot hornbeam is a beautiful tree. But it has a very short life, it's in the birch family, like forty to fifty years and it's dead. Um, service berry, I find those, they don't grow to more than twenty feet, cause they die within ten years. Um, they don't like being around traffic so much, um, there's some dogwoods that probably do better. Uh, I would also suggest contacting Khumboli, there are elm varieties that are Dutch elm disease resistant now. Those tend to play very well in urban environments and don't keep sidewalks or curbs so much or play with water lines. Uh, a couple of other ones, and, and I know Khumboli's have all these, uh, London plane tree. They do very well with pollution. And they're also very good with urban environments. We don't know how long those will live, cause they've only been around for four hundred years, but they haven't died from old age yet. Uh, and Kentucky coffee tree, uh, also a very good urban tree that plays well with the environment.
Um, we have tried to get Kentucky coffee trees and haven't been able to get them.
From Khumboli?
Um, from any of our contractors that we've had, so we'll keep trying, because it is a beautiful tree.
Okay, I, I just planted eight of them from Khumboli. I must, I must know how to ask a special nice. Well, and what I'd recommend is, you need to get the list of them in February and then the trees will be harvested specifically.
Um, actually, they asked for the form of us recording them over here, um, so that's what we're trying to do, really.
That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you for those comments, Jamie?
Yeah, on the topic of trees, I think it's come up at parks, so maybe Josh can help jog my memory here. I know we've had a resident in attendance several times who I think has his own personal expertise in trees, and I think when different proposals have come in front of planning and council, I think he's also been interested in species selection. I think he was involved in the planting of the trees, the Eagle Scout project.
This is Terry?
Yes. And I think he asked if the city had its own, is there a tree inventory for the city?
We had one probably almost twenty years ago, um, on this previous community development venture. Excuse me, it was something, the community went out for an RFP, uh, selected a contractor, it was when we had, um, uh, a program, your GIS, to do the inventory, um, but that program required, um, the program to be updated annually at a rate of ten thousand dollars a year and, um, that was not something that the, um, village council, uh, wanted to do at the time, we were also, uh, coming into the greater sessions, um, we are, uh, Jenna Ellsworth, the new associate planner, is working with O H M. And one of the things that we're looking at is how we can, it should be able to utilize GIS through a cloud um, format, if I'm not mistaken, to ultimately end up conducting an inventory and then maintaining them with time.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and we're at the very, very early stage of it.
So then just repeat what I heard, there are plans to perhaps implement some sort of new inventory in a more cost, cost-effective manner.
Uh, yeah, I keep the script.
Right, um, and then I guess as it relates to sort of the historical marker agenda item that's coming up later, I think this also came up in parks related to trees, and I'm seeing here, City of Ann Arbor, for example, has something called like their champion tree tour and it denotes specific trees in the City of Ann Arbor that are, that are of particular interest. So I don't know, it seemed like on parks, somebody mentioned that there is some tree and there are apps that people across the nation, or at least the region use, and then they drive specifically miles and hours to find these trees. So if that could, you know, I suppose once there's an inventory, once certain of those trees are located, that also could be a neat feature, I think. For the community, um, locally and then regionally and perhaps even beyond. Thanks.
Jamie, just so you know, at the next council meeting, council will see your recommendation from me to appoint Terry Sheriff to the Parks Commission.
Okay, yeah, that would be great.
So, just talk to him, we'll see what's on there.
A frequent attendee.
Yes, I have talked with him, met him before, he's gonna be really excited to be on parks, he's wanted to be appointed to that, so. So if there are no other questions, I'll go into my verbal things.
Please.
Okay. So at the last council meeting, um, excuse me, there was a question asked if the, um, the survey that we're planning to do as part of the master plan, the housing forum update, um, was going to be a scientific survey. Um, I wasn't sure at the time, I have reached out to, uh, Carlisle Wartman. Um, it is not a scientific survey or a, what we would call a scientifically significant survey. Um, but I did direct, uh, CWA to, um, follow up with their, um, the consultant that they use, which is called Community Research. I asked them for a, um, uh, what the cost would be for that particular type of a survey and the fee for them assisting with the four-page, two-sheet survey with it, uh, sent to a random sample of two thousand residents in this calendar year would be at a fee of about, of approximately eighteen thousand dollars. Uh, excuse me, um, we currently, uh, we don't have the budget, um, for, to cover all eighteen thousand, um, approximately three thousand is factored into our current um, uh, net to exceed budget, which is covered by a grant. It would leave about thirteen thousand that we'd have to, uh, unfortunately to determine if they want to use additional planning, uh, budgeted dollars to cover it. Um, we're looking at bringing this to you in a more formal fashion at your next meeting, we just didn't have enough time between, um, the last meeting and now to get it on the agenda, the information just wasn't there directly. So this will come in front of you at your next meeting to consider, um, whether to go with the, the um, course of action that we've set, um, so far, if there's gonna be a, uh, if we change it to do a housing listening session and with the scientific they scientifically significant survey, or if we decide to take survey out of the picture completely and do a number of housing forum events where we're going to the people, um, um, the first one doesn't really change our timeline, uh, the second to do in one, which it would change the class, so. I'll give that to you at your next meeting.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from Michelle? No.
Oh, she sat down.
Yeah. Okay, uh, we have a written sheriff report in the packet, thank you, Michelle, for your report, appreciate it. Does anybody have any questions on the written sheriff's report? Or comments? Okay, seeing none, I will move down to J five, City Manager Report, Justin?
Sure, so, um, just a couple of items, um, train passes. Um, so you do have a draft for the fall newsletter in the packet, um, I wanted to get that in there because we're trying to get it out before uh, the end of September, uh, so that way, um, the fall cleanup day and the start of leaf collection can get out to residents, um, in time. Um, we're looking at a Mill Creek Park Cleanup Day on Saturday, October twelfth, uh, for anyone who's available and, and interested. Um, always meet out in Mill Creek Park and do some planting, do some weed pulling, um, some general, general beautification. Um, our new finance director slash treasurer on deck, uh, Tim Preby um, is scheduled to start, uh, to, to, well, he started today, but, um, him, he and Marie are at a conference. Um, so the first day that he'll be in the office is, uh, Thursday. And then, um, uh, Josh, Jenna and Ryan spent a, a good chunk of their day uh, stuffing ballots, uh, for the November election. And we're expecting that, uh, those will, uh, get in the mail tomorrow. Other than that, does anybody have any, any questions for me?
Wow. Uh, just two things on this back side of the newsletter. I feel like I brought this up before, so maybe it's taken around in a master template somewhere. Um, and then also, just, I can't help but see this, um, it up here and down here, we're in two different orders and this is not alphabetized correctly.
Okay.
Jamie?
Yeah, just a comment that I think, uh, online minutes for parks meetings is council and ACH are a bit out of date, so just making sure that those minutes are uploaded to the website, the last ACH minutes that you can find online are from May. Council might just be one behind, um, in parks, the last minutes posted were in April.
Okay.
Um, I, um, I appreciate you getting the proposal on the quiet zone, the train quiet zones from O H M. Um, I don't know when you're planning to have that back for review and consideration, but um, sometime or not, be at the next meeting, I think I'll just make sure I say that, it's been my experience um, that quiet zones would require the city to help fund the upgrades for the signal crossing devices, both vehicular and pedestrian. It would likely divide those. And they would likely get us, or ask us to agree to share in responsibility from a liability perspective for an accident, which doesn't which we have none right now. And that's a huge thing to take on, plus sharing in the cost of the upgrades and as a trade-off for, in, in my opinion anyway, as a trade-off for the quiet zone. Um, you know, when we paused here to let the train go by, it wasn't really the whistle that was the problem, it was the sound of the train here in the building, but um, anyway, just, just wanted to state that I had other communities that have asked for those evaluations and I've been part of the diagnostic testing that they do ahead of time and the walkthroughs with the M dot and the state and everybody else that comes out. Um, but accepting the liability, I think, is the real question that we would have to wrestle with, and I don't know why we would wanna take that liability on, share that, we don't have any now. So, just keep that in mind when it comes in front of us, please. But I, I mentioned to you what they say and what they do, everybody's proposal, so.
Yeah, um, Marcus indicated that, that they do have somebody on staff who has participated in other evaluations and so, um, he forwarded my response over to, to that person, um, the, to get that ball rolling. Um, as I have time, I'm, I'm trying to start, um, picking away at, uh, some of the proposed agenda items for, for future meetings. Um,
Yeah, no, that's good, that's good. I didn't mean to, to really.
No.
Other questions for Justin? Zach?
It's, it's been a while since it's been before, is, is there any updates you can provide on rental ordinance?
I'll ask, uh, Michelle?
Rental inspection ordinance?
So, it's been drafted, council has seen, um, word steps, juggling, all the different things that I know I need to figure out, um, to, um, create a, um, an engagement, uh, publicly with one of the warrants as well as the public. Um, for the change of that.
Any other questions? Okay, I'll move down my report, um, the highlight is that I'm very likely to miss the next meeting, so Joe will be running the next meeting. Take care of him, treat him well. Paul used to say, take care of my city, or some version of that, so it's funny, I'm thinking I'm gonna remind. People of that, but I don't have any glaring other report other than my my uh state of the city is largely done. I wasn't gonna talk about the ballot initiative, but since we received the letter from. Whoever this person is, I do plan to talk about it, so I'm just go writing that couple of paragraphs, so. That's the only thing that uh. Is delaying the completion.
Will you share that with us?
You will read it when every other resident reads it.
That seems inappropriate.
Well, I wouldn't deliver it ahead of time and then deliver it in person ahead of time, but I mean, I wouldn't do two deliveries.
I'm asking for the courtesy of the member of council to review what the spokesperson for council is sharing on behalf of council in the newsletter.
Like I said, I'm gonna put it in the newsletter. Any other questions for me? Are there any council member reports under J seven? Yes, why?
Just quickly, um on Friday, I attended the high school field hockey game and presented a proclamation. Um declaring the day Abby Tamer Dexter Olympian Day. Um she, you know, graduated from Dexter. In twenty twenty-one and was in attendance to be honored as the first Dexter High School graduate. Who made it to the Olympics and the first field hockey player in the state of Michigan to make it to the Olympics. The first U of M field hockey player to make it to the Olympics. Um she was not aware we were doing that, so um. It caught her off guard. She was very touched and it was a it was very nice um celebration of her accomplishments.
Heard she signed a lot of autographs.
Yeah, there was a line, a very long line. And uh uh somebody had made shirts, so there were kids walking around with her name, like shirts with her name on the back and. One of them had, I don't know, she might have been like ten, twelve. She had written so said Tamer on the top and on the bottom she had written in parentheses untainted.
Thank you for going and doing that. Okay, we're down to the consent agenda where there are six items. Someone make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move we approve the six items on the consent agenda, all consideration items. One, bills and payroll in the amount of four hundred and eleven thousand ninety-three dollars and eighty-eight cents. Two, sale of equipment via auction. Three, appointment to election commission. Four, correction of DDA appointment terms. Five, request from the Dexter Lions Club for the closure of Central Street between Main Street and Fifth Street on October fifth for Apple Days. And six, setting a public hearing on October fourteenth twenty-four regarding an ordinance to lease a portion of thirty-five fifteen Broad Street. To the Dexter Area Fire Department.
Motion by Hubbard. Second by Schloss. Please call the vote to approve the consent agenda.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Alday?
Yes.
Sima Pharaoh?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Schlopp?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Kio?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. New business site or unfinished business item L one. Is consideration of sending a letter to city residents with information regarding the city of Dexter. Better amendment proposal under November general election ballot. This was postponed from last meeting. And given that the motion that was made at the last meeting didn't receive a second, we'll continue, we'll have the the clean slate, so. There is some information that we received this week and in the supplement. I don't know if everybody saw the supplement, or have seen the supplement. You know, up until receiving this letter. I was holding out hope that. The uh friends of Mill Creek Park was just trying to make sure that. The land that was parkland. Would stay parkland in some way, shape or form. But uh this letter clearly. Presents and forecasts the uh the real intent of the. Silly ballot language that's in front of us, or will be in front of voters in November. Again, I don't know the attorney that's representing this group at all, uh but this this letter that he wrote us. Has a lot of inaccuracies in it, a lot of false statements. And um. It's disappointing because. It just it's just another misleading. Document on on this whole path. But obviously, the intentions of that group are are unveiled here. Especially the part that they will demand that the fire station be relocated. I don't know if this is a threat. Or the threat of legal action. But I'm not impressed by it. I'm offended by it. Um this is poorly written. He he infers in the second sentence or the first sentence of the second paragraph. That the amendment would require cer- certain described city-owned land to be retained in public ownership in perpetuity and devoted to only active. Or passive recreation uses. The word only is not anywhere in the ballot initiative. And the word devoted is not used either. Now the word devote is. But devote doesn't mean that it can't be shared, that the space can't be shared. Anybody who looks up the word can see that very easily in the dictionary. So, you know, again, I there was part of me that had hoped that this was just somebody trying to say, hey, don't make too much more of the land use. But it it's clear that this is that the intention is to try and stop the fire station from being built. Or to want it not there and. That's just ridiculous, in my opinion, so um. So I'm gonna talk about it in my newsletter and I think we should. Definitely find language uh some somehow to talk about the fact that we've been threatened now. In some type of uh letter to the residents and talks about the ballot. There's a lot of facts that we can state. Uh we need to put them out there. So I'm happy to um. Entertain anybody's motion to get that conversation started. I got a chance to see this letter last Friday. And uh after I saw it, I told Justin to make sure he shares in the packet. And I asked him to think about facts that we are able to state in public. And um. He took a shot at that. Here in the supplement, so thank you for that. Is there a council member that would like to make a motion?
I would like to just establish a point of order.
Sure.
That per Roberts rules, a main motion has to be moved and seconded and restated by the chair before we can discuss it. Think that's something you tend to do on other motions, um and then the person who is first afforded the opportunity to speak is the person who's made the motion.
Okay, so is there someone that would like to make a motion? Joe?
Um we issue a letter to residents containing the information that is included in the supplement starting on. It's well on page seven, eight, nine, ten. Form that subject to debate in this session.
Is there a second?
Yes, I can that.
Okay, so. Page seven, as referenced by Joe, is the memorandum. You us, city council from Justin and Ryan, is that right? Seven, eight, nine, ten, is everyone understand what's motion is made?
Yes.
Okay, Joe?
Um there's a lot of, a lot of good information here. I think that it might be good to. Do something of a summary at a top, maybe bullet points that say, here's the items and then detail below. I heard that putting it over three or four pages will lead to some tea. But I think if there was just a series of bullet points at the top and then supporting information, that could be helpful. I I do think, I mean. The information that's there, reference to the letter also. I mean, I I think I think the point that it says only not once but twice in that verse or the second paragraph. I actually had a discussion with the resident over the weekend about the ballot language and. Part of the discussion again was about the wording and that the wording. I I would even is ambiguous, that it doesn't say only active or doesn't say only, doesn't say exclusively, it doesn't say. No other uses, it doesn't say to move the fire station. And I I still honestly believe there's a problem with the boundary, the way it's written. Um I know we discussed the right of ways last time, but. The ballot, the ballot language doesn't talk about right, it talks about the streets. And it could have easily said. South of the fires or south of the library, it could have had the parcel number, it could have said, commonly known as Mill Creek Park North. And the fire station. There there's a dozen different ways that those things could have been clarified so that it was completely clear. And there was no ambiguity and there's nowhere that anybody outside of the city of Dexter. Would have reason or cause to make an interpretation about what it is that's said. Uh in the ballot as proposed in the petition. So I I think a letter is important because the things that are in here are. Are real, I mean, the the we have a financial, potential financial impact um on delaying and or. Delaying the fire department, we have um. Potential financial impacts from uh defending uh legal. Suits that might be brought, um the there's, there's a lot here that. Uh a casual observer might not know about this issue in the city. And I think it's important to let them know that these are uh possibilities and. So I think it's important to do that. Um you made the second.
Yeah, absolutely. I I agree with those. I think there is a lot of um. Misinformation about. Why this. Group came, the committee came about, what was the intent of it? And things like that, um that. It would be good to shed light on in a broader aspect. And you know, as as you said. Sean, that the. Um letter we received from that attorney. If up to this point, it was. Trying to, in some sense, um. Hide the intentions and the processes and the things that went be behind um this. Petition and um the ballot proposal is now clearly. On table and I think there are also parts of these when I was reading it and and was the. The bullet points of. The. That the city has um. Not has acted in bad faith. A lot of those points are just said without, not only they are not true. But also they are set in a way. To hide a lot of um factual timeline elements of how this um. Committee and petition came about. So that there is, I I fully agree with all these bullet points. I would like to. See feedback from. Potentially adding. But incorporating in this timeline, the timeline of how the petition came about. The decision that was at the council. When this committee was filed, how it was filed. And the relation of that filing with um. The decisions that the council made. Because there are part of this letter that indicates that council made some decisions. While the petition was known and that is not true. So I'm. I fully agree with this. I would also be in favor of adding some language in. In the timeline of how the petition itself came about to make it a little bit more clear for the residents of that. What were the decisions of the council and what were the decisions of the. Friends of Mill Creek Park. And that hopefully will show even clearer. That some of the this that the decisions that council made um were outside of even awareness of the petition.
Okay, why I blew you underhand up?
Uh yeah, so. Just two things. I agree with Joe um Joe's comments about. You know, they're being fatigued from all this, so I think we really need to focus on what's at the top. Really tighten that up and make sure it's. You know, explains what comes next, uh so. Um people will actually look at it. Um the other thing is, I have been contacted in the last two weeks. By more residents asking me what the heck this is about than almost any other issue. That I've been a part of since joining council. People are very confused. Um they don't understand why they're being asked this question. And they don't understand the implications, so I think that this is a very important thing that we put out.
Um would it be possible for me to ask a question from our attorney?
Sure.
Hi, good evening. Hello, um I have a question, not necessarily regarding the petition and such. Can a sitting member of. Council, staff, any committee or commissions. Threaten legal action against the city?
Well. People are, even though they're on. You know, elected or appointed boards, they still have First Amendment rights, so um. They certainly can act and take actions um that may be. Opposed to the the bodies that they sit on, that's the way to say it. That answers your question. Would they have, you're saying, do they have a right to file a lawsuit against the city or?
Wouldn't they be considered the employee of the city? And then can an employee take legal action against the city if somebody is receiving a paycheck from the city?
Certainly, an employee of the city can still sue the city.
Okay.
Just curious, thank you.
Jamie.
Yes, I think regarding the timeline, I agree.
Yes, I think regarding the timeline, I agree if some additional dates would be beneficial. Including the dates that do demonstrate that council did take action after being aware of. The char, the proposed charter amendment. So I would, I mean, in addition to adding some additional dates, which I will share. I think it would come across better if everything was actually in chronological order, chronological order. So I would, I, you know, I would leave with the earliest date that we have so far. I would also add to the timeline. On March twenty seventh, twenty twenty-three, council was made aware of the Friends of Mill Creek Park Charter Amendment effort. I would also add. Uh, which I believe is on here. It is not. On April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three. So this is a month after being made aware of the effort. Council engaged in a more detailed discussion of the Friends of Mill Creek Park effort. At that same meeting, April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, council voted five to two. To assign three addresses to the Public Facilities Bond Resolution. Limiting the expenditure of those public monies to eighty-one forty Main Street, perends the site of the current fire station. Thirty-five fifteen Broad Street, perends City Hall, and thirty-six hundred Central Street, perends Department of Public Works. Effectively precluding those funds from being spent at any other location. I would add. Um, I guess I'm going to formally make this part of a motion, um, a motion to add the March twenty-seventh, April twenty-fourth. Uh, on August twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three. Without any discussion of the item, council voted five to two to postpone the consideration of a resolution to adopt ballot language. Relating to the Friends of Mill Creek Park Charter Amendment until December eleventh, twenty twenty-three. On December eleventh, twenty twenty-three, a motion was made to approve the resolution to adopt ballot language related to the Friends of Mill Creek Park Charter Amendment. But the motion failed. The item was unofficially postponed until February twenty twenty-four. On February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, council voted five to one to adopt a resolution. To adopt Charter Amendment Ballot Proposal Language and instructed staff to submit it to the Michigan Attorney General and Governor no sooner than May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. Perends, the last date required to meet the deadline for such submission. Staffs submitted the ballot proposal language on May twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. I move to add those to the timeline.
Yeah, okay, motion and second, how they're just be the dates, the, the three twenty-seven, four twenty.
March twenty-seventh, four twenty-four, eight twenty-eight, twelve eleven twenty-three.
Yeah.
Two twenty-six, twenty-four.
Okay, there wasn't one between the, okay, I got them all then. But I thought I missed one, thank you. Everybody get those?
If we are adding the exact time and for, for Justin, then I would like to add those ti- uh, dates that I was mentioning as well. On February thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. The council postponed the decision of the location of fire station. On February sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. Council member Michelle's and council member Griffin formed Friends of Mill Creek Park. In the week of March fourth. Actually, not that one.
What was the previous day?
So February thirteen was when the. Location was discussed first. Um, and it was postponed. February sixteenth, twenty twenty-three is when the Friends of Mill Creek Park was formed by council member Michelle's, council member Griffin. When the couns, when the petition, the date that, um, Ms. Griffin just brought up about informing the council about the petition. It was. Brought up as a petition being circulated, not as a complete petition filed. It could have not have enough signature, it could have not fa- been filed, it was. Legally a non-existing thing until it was filed on May second, I believe.
I just have a follow-up question to Mr. Rob, if I may.
Sure.
Um, sorry, my last name is Aldeg.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's, I don't frequently address by your last name. If you want to emphasize the potential irrelevance of council being made aware of the effort. As if it were sort of a moot point at that point, I'm curious to know why it's relevant to mention when itself was formed. If even at that point, it was sort of a non, a non-starter.
The decision. Of sharing the information with the council. When you just brought it up about adding it that the council made decisions while aware the petition was existing. That is different on the, knowing the existence of the petition. So that. What I'm bringing up is for public to know. When the intent of this letter was very well emphasized. When this petition was formed and who formed the, the, when the committee was formed and who formed the committee. But that is an informational. The part that. You were bringing up regarding council making decisions. As if the council should have stopped making decisions because they were aware of a petition going around. Those are two different things. A petition, none, until it is filed, it is just a piece of paper going around with signatures. I could get, gather.
You seem to like take offense that we created a ballot proposal committee. Um, at the time that we did, it, it could have just as easily been a non-starter, but apparently there was perceived. Right by it, um, I mean, if you want to mention that we're the ones who started it, which is fine, I, that's a fact. What I had not read aloud during my motion, but I guess I will add, um, back to my motion is that. You were the one who made council aware of the Charter Amendment effort.
I did.
So I would revise, um, I, I would move that the March twenty-seventh date read on March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, council member, council member Aldeg. Made council aware of the Friends of Mill Creek Park Charter Amendment effort during her comments at the end of the meeting.
Yes.
Thank you, Zach.
May I add one more?
Sure.
Comment. Again, to me that I'm fine with that. I informed the council. But that was not to me until a ca- a petition, it is filed. And it becomes it, it's legally binding. It could have just been thrown in the garbage if somebody wanted it.
Joe?
At the, um, March thirteenth mi- uh, twenty twenty-three meeting. Um, as reflected in the minutes. Um, from council comments, I handed out at that time. A amendment that read amend the ballot language approved at the February twenty-seventh meeting. To include the following addresses for the use of the bond fund, called out eight-one forty main, thirty-five fifteen broad, thirty-six hundred central street. Which was before March twenty-second meeting, that was on the March thirteenth. So that, uh, discussion or the putting that amendment or the potential for that amendment out. Was done then because we were under a tight timeline in order to issue the bonds and I did not want. Someone to say or dispute that we had received the language, that we hadn't received the language prior to. Uh, the next meeting, if that was when we decided to do it, whenever it was that we decided to do it, so that was out there prior to March twenty-seventh.
Okay, so it sounds like everybody wants to include the entire chronology since the, since we adopted the last ballot language. Where we voted to authorize eight point four million to be spent on. Essentially police fire. And, and whatever locations we determine. Zach?
Yeah, a bit of clarification. The ballot language did not include any address or location, correct?
Neither ballot language includes address or location.
All right, and we have counsel here, maybe Marie would be able to answer this better. Unlimited tax general obligation bonds are not required to be tied to a specific address. Right, we, we have our road mileage. That's not tied to any address, that was extra information that's not required for issuance of bonds, correct?
Correct.
All right.
Jamie.
Yes, I move we add an additional date to the timeline on May second, twenty twenty-three. The statement of organization for the Friends of Mill Creek Park Ballot Proposal Committee was amended. Such that. Two private citizens. Yes, took control of the organization, I'm not quite sure exactly how to phrase that.
That's actually a public official and a private citizen. For the wording in the conflict of interest, includes people of commissions, which includes parks commission.
To two non-council members, or you could say council members Griffin and Michelle are no longer listed as. On the statement of organization. Yes, do you, I mean, if you have suggestions as to how to better phrase that?
We got a video, they can take it. So, so does, um. Jamie, you made the motion, are you accepting Sanam's dates too?
Sure, sure, read them back.
That have been thrown out, there's a whole bunch of.
I mean, I'm trying to do this very, um, carefully by moving every time I want something, so.
I understand.
If other people want that, I would ask them to.
Trying to understand what.
Make that more clear.
I just will try to understand whether I have to separate what Sanam said from what you said. I've got a little line on my piece of paper, but I, I think I have.
Now, if you want to read back to me the dates you think she said?
Well, the dates I think you said are March twenty-seventh. April twenty-fourth. You've just added May second. With, which, and, and then August twenty-eighth. December eleventh. And February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four. Those are the dates that I had from you. If I missed one, I apologize, I was trying.
No, I don't think so.
And the dates I added.
And the date she added was two thirteen, two sixteen. And five-two, which is the actual filing date, if I understood it correctly.
Two sixteen is the original filing date, five-two is when it was amended, which is the date I offered.
Five-two was when the petition was filed with all.
Yeah, yeah, two sixteen is when the committee was formed, is what I, was what I took.
Got it.
Maybe I understood that wrong.
Right, no, that's right.
Five-two is when it was officially turned into the city.
And the.
And that's the same.
The statement of organization was amended.
amended, so two things happened on May second.
Yes.
Right, that's what you're saying. Quite a story.
And three thirteen.
I'm sorry?
And three thirteen, the addresses.
Yeah, that was, well, that was an address, that was the part of the motion you were making, so I'm gonna go over to your next.
I'll move we amend the original motion to include the dates that council member Aldeg and myself have added.
Okay, so. Point, point order, do we have three motions to amend sitting on top now?
Well, hers didn't get seconded, so.
I.
Hold on, hold on, let me answer the question. There's only one motion that's been made and seconded friendly a couple different times, and that's Jamie's. That's an amendment to. The staff. Okay, Sanam has suggested some dates in a motion and Joe has also, so we can either have. We can have either two.
Well, if you want to get really technical, there was a couple of friendly amendments that were thrown in there.
Yeah, yeah, but they were between the two people who made the original amendment motion, so I'm, I'm, I understand what. So the, the motion to amend is what Jamie and Zach have put forth. We should handle one at a time.
Go ahead.
Okay. And then if we want to add yours, you should make a motion, or if you want to add yours, you should make a motion. Everybody understand where we're at?
Sure.
I'm trying to do this organized. At the same time, so. Okay, so what, Zach?
Just, uh. Please vote against this first one and make it easier. Thank you.
What'd you say, please vote again?
Yeah, it'll, it'll make some things easier, that's all.
I'm not sure, I don't understand what you mean about that. Can you clarify it, Tommy?
No, we can talk after if you're interested.
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna call the vote to add. The dates of three twenty-seven, four twenty-four, these are all in twenty twenty-three. May second, twenty twenty-three, August twenty-eight, twenty twenty-three, December eleventh, twenty twenty-three, and February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four. For the original. Motion that's on the table by Summer Farrell, seconded by Aldeg. Everybody understand what we're voting on? Say that one more time. The motion that Jamie made.
Right.
Has been amended the original motion.
Okay.
That's what we're voting.
Okay.
And the dates that she included, included were the ones I read. Well, Justin, when you're ready, please make a motion, or please make, please call the roll to on that.
Can I ask one question?
Yeah.
Jamie also mentioned making, putting things in chronological order. Is that part of this motion as well?
I believe it was. Well, I don't know if it was, it was.
But can it be?
Yes.
Yeah, it can be, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so everybody understands that's part of the motion, then, thank you. When you're ready, please call that vote, if you would.
Summer Farrell?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Aldeg?
Yes.
Schlaf?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Kio?
Yes. Okay, so now we have an amended original motion. Sanam, did you want to make a motion to add your additional dates?
Yes.
And if you do it, you can do it with Joe's three thirteen, so we only have to do one more amendment, that'd be great.
Um, so I would like to, uh, I move to amend the motion and add the dates. February thirteen, twenty twenty-three. February sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. And was it March thirteenth, Joe?
Yes.
Twenty-three.
And then five-two.
And five-two. And the signatures.
Second by the end, okay, great. Any discussion on Sanam's? Most additions? Okay, see none? Oh, I'm sorry. Too many turns, sorry.
Yeah, just I, I'm reminded of, uh, debate teacher from high school saying if you, if you're not familiar with debate. Look at who's discussing topics and who's discussing people.
Okay, thank you. Justin, please call the vote to approve that amendment to the originally amended motion.
Uh, Schlaf?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yep.
Griffin?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Aldeg?
Yes.
Summer Farrell?
Yes.
Kio?
Yes. Okay, so we, we now have. A whole bunch of dates are passed. As to be incorporated into the bullets that are on seven, page seven, eight, nine, and ten of the resolution, I'm sorry, of the supplement. That is the active motion in front of us. I would. Like to suggest that in the first bullet, that this be. Proofread or whatever, but I think that the, no, heard that, last sentence. And did should be does. But I I you you created that, so I'll have you. I'll work on that to make sure the tense is correct. Okay. We're back, we're back on this with the with the additions and the additional dates, and that we're putting it in chronological order, essentially from the. Original ballot. Is that the reference in here? Yes, Jamie, sorry.
Uh, yes, I don't know if we could ask um. Legal counsel about that first bullet point. Specifically, I'm curious if there are other mechanisms for restricting land use. That do not include zoning ordinance amendments. And is the only way to read the proposed charter amendment to be one of an effective zoning ordinance amendment?
Sorry, could you say that again?
Yeah, I think. So according to this first bullet, um, the argument being made is that the city charter language is effectively a zoning ordinance amendment. And in order to amend a zoning ordinance, there are specific processes that need to be followed. Is there another mechanism for restricting land use? That is not a zoning ordinance amendment, that this charter amendment might be construed to be. Implementing.
I don't think so, I mean, the case. Is about. The 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 case law talks about you get the Home Rule City Act. Gives cities a variety of powers, and you've got a specific ordinance or specific statute related to zoning, Michigan's zoning enabling act. And the specific statute controls over the more general um Home Rule City Act. And what this case basically said is that. A petition, a citizen initiated petition that wanted to um. Say that any building is greater than sixty feet had to get voter approval in the city of Traverse City. And the Court of Appeals said that that is in effect a zoning. Decision, that is a zoning issue, and it can only be adopted. Consistent with the zoning enabling act. So the proposal, the citizen initiative initiative. But the citizen petition regarding the the use of. The property over there at eighty one forty. I don't see any way you can read that except as something that is affecting the land use. Of that land, which is squarely within what would be classic zoning. Authority, and so I don't, I don't see, I at least, I mean, you know, off the top of my head, I don't. I I don't really see a way it could be interpreted other than, you know, what it's doing, which is affecting land use. Um, it's. So that's that's the way I would look at it. Okay, to take Zach's question?
That's fine, yeah.
If I might offer, um. C. Van Arbor had a very similar thing, and one of the big differences in that one stuck. Contract to sell a property. The the charter amendment was adopted, they had to sell the property or buy the property back. Big difference between the the charter amendment for us and Traverse City is that that one applied to all properties. What with private, this one only applies to city owned lands like the Ann Arbor. There are other mechanisms where use can be restricted, easements, um, covenants from restrictions, deed restrictions. That are outside of zone, and we have many of those, all of our associations have those. Um, when public land is purchased or sold, it often comes with those, when the big boxes are sold, it also comes with those, so there are. Mechanisms outside of zoning ordinances and scheduled new statements that do restrict uses.
That's that's a good point, I guess what I would say is that the language of the. Petition is not couched in those kind of terms, um, it's. It is what it is. Um, the other interesting thing about the city of Ann Arbor ordinance, it was adopted, nobody challenged it. Uh, the developer in the city agreed to walk away. And that's different than what happened in Traverse City, where they did adopt, they actually adopted the ordinance, they it was it was approved by the voters. But ultimately, the court held that it was not enforceable, it was invalid because. It wasn't, didn't comply with the zoning en- enabling act provisions. So this could be adopted, it could be adopted to, you know, November, but. The way I read the case law, it can't be enforced. Hopefully, that's helpful.
Thank you.
Well, the the fire station right now sits on. Central Business District, right? And this would be taking away the the uses of the central business business district. The way it's, Scott, is that that's your read? And the way the way the ballot, the ballot of citizen initiated ballot language is would be taking away. The uses that are permitted by our zoning ordinance in the central business district for that area.
Right, I mean, I I don't know how you could other read it otherwise, uh, it's trying to affect the uses that are permitted on. Those, there's actually two parcels, the the there's part that's own CBD, and then the rest of it is PF.
Right.
Both of which allow a wide variety of uses. Um.
Both of which allow public buildings.
Yes. So it seems, yeah, so uh, this would, it would seem to me that the.
My my point is even even if it was. Somehow. Use changed. Through court. RPF allows public buildings. And and like devote isn't a devote isn't a one hundred percent word. In the ballot language. Okay, I think I understand, thank you. Okay. Justin, please call the vote to approve the motion originally made by. Summer Pharaoh, seconded by Aldag, and amended twice.
Aldag?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Schlaf?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Summer Pharaoh?
Yes.
Kio?
Yes. Motion carries, well done. We worked together towards something that was good. I liked it. Okay, the business uh, M one is consideration of Michigan Historical Markers to commemorate sites of historical significance. In the Dexter area and the state of Michigan. Went up, so.
No problem.
But all progresses.
Thank you, sir. So I'm uh.
Thank you.
Holding the motion for you to make, sir.
Yeah. The fall of resolution, whereas Dexter observed a bias in telling in in twenty twenty four, and whereas Dexter in the surrounding area. Are home to structures and places of historical significance to the area and state of Michigan. And whereas Dexter has an interest in identifying and locating these historical resources. And whereas Dexter has an interest in educating the public about these historical resources, developing the public's knowledge of the importance of this history. And whereas Dexter has an interest in encouraging the public to preserve historic resources and fostering a sense of identity. And whereas Dexter has an interest in enhancing cultural tourism by encouraging residents and visitors to investigate our historic resources. And whereas Dexter has an interest in uniting people from our city, region, and state through improved dissemination of information about our historic resources. And whereas Dexter establishes Arts Culture and Heritage Committee in two thousand eight to advance arts culture and heritage within the community. And whereas the state of Michigan, through Governor John B. Swainson, Michigan Historical Markers Act, Public Act ten of nineteen fifty five. Desires to advance knowledge of the state's historical resources, heritage, and cultural resources. And whereas the Michigan Historical Commission and staff of the Michigan History Center, Minister of the Michigan Historical Market Program. Which has placed more than eighteen hundred historical markers across the state of Michigan, in other states and in Europe since nineteen fifty five, it's it's true, you can check the map. Uh, and whereas there are currently two historical markers within the city of Dexter, at Saint Joseph Church and Dexter Depot. And whereas there are many other historical resources within the city and surrounding area that deserve recognition, including but not limited to Michigan Central Railroad bridges. Dexter Cider Mill, Gordon Hall, a post office library, village office building, the Bell Road Bridge, when it comes. Uh, Dexter Mill, the Sawmill Site. Um, the wooden woolen mill site, the Grist Mill Site, the Four Dam Site, and Forest Lawn Cemetery. Uh, and now therefore be it resolved that city staff is directed to work with the Arts Culture and Heritage Committee to further investigate. Michigan Historical Market Program to provide guidance to city council by, let's say, the last meeting. In the sub in November. Or sorry, November. Uh, be it further involved, that city staff and the Arts Culture and Heritage Committee are directed to investigate the city owned historical resources noted in this resolution. Provide guidance on appropriateness for commemoration with the Michigan Historical Marker. Be it further resolved, that city staff and the Arts Culture and Heritage Committee are directed to contact privately owned historical resources. And encourage them to apply for or work with the city to secure placement of a Michigan Historical Marker. Be it further resolved, that city staff and the Arts Culture and Heritage Committee may work with other city committees or commissions or and other entities to advance this project. And be it further resolved, that city staff is directed to prepare initial findings on Michigan Historical Marker Program and potential locations, no later than the first city council member. Meeting in November.
A second, a second.
Seconded by Griffin? Jamie, what was it?
Yes.
Okay, um, Zach, did you say? Under the now therefore be resolved, that you wanted it by the last meeting in November? I thought I heard last up there and first down under the.
Yeah, let's go first. For both of them.
First for both, I just wanted to make sure.
I was trying to read it really fast.
You're okay, I just wanted to make sure they were consistent, is what I thought your intent was, so, okay. I'm okay either way. Sanam?
Um, a question, um, are you aware of the work that the Historical Society and Arts and Culture Committee already in doing in this space?
I've talked with a couple of them about this program, and I actually sent it off for someone to to get comments for before bringing it here, I didn't get those, that's why I was waiting. Um, my understanding is that it was something that they had discussed, but there it was too big a party to plan. Over the past couple of months, and so this is something that they looked at, but hadn't started yet, so this is kind of an endorsement, please do it.
So we had this at the last Arts and Art Culture and Heritage Committee meeting, and we reviewed some of the things. Um, I'm in favor of this, the same way that I was in favor of that, and I'm hoping to move it forward. I just want to make sure that we are giving the Arts. Culture and Heritage Committee and the Historical Society that is working on this together. Enough time that they are able to. Do this. Meaningfully.
And and so.
So I don't know, sorry, excuse me, um, I just don't know if the date of first of November, given that we only will have one more meeting in. Arts and Culture Committee. Until this date would be something that is feasible. Um, I want to make sure if it's, when we do it, we do it right, so.
You want to make it like the first meeting in January? And give them the quarter?
That would be better, yes. Yeah. Josh, any?
I don't know if that's acceptable. Zach, or I'm just trying to try to address both.
So so my my thoughts are that it's not asking for final. Final action or guidance in November first, this is, this is a finance, this this is a council, it's a policymaking body. We we want the folks who specialize in this to look at it and provide us some more information November first, so we got to determine if it's something we want to keep doing. That that's what my goal is, and and I I would prefer it to be quicker than later because. It it keeps the fire open, it doesn't. Become something that happens in our two hundred and third year.
I I appreciate that, if I may, is is. I, and again, I don't think anybody's intention is to slowing this down, certainly not mine. Maybe we can rephrase it to say. Provide initial guidance or some something that doesn't, right now, this really looks very definite to me of. Provide guidance to the city means generally give us your full guidance, so.
So initially adding initial to the uh, in front of. Provide guidance under the now therefore would be consistent with the be further resolved, that says initial also, all of that.
Same thing.
We're adding initial up here. Um, right there, provide initial guidance, which is consistent with prepare initial findings down here.
Okay.
Keep the first meeting in November there, then?
Joe, um, I I have a question just about the entire. What the overall intent is. The first where is on the second page says there are thirty two historic markers within the city of Dexter. So it sounds like there's already. A process or a way for historic sites to be designated. Maybe just by private means instead of public means? I mean, do you happen to know how those two historic markers got done?
Yep, so in in the packet, there's general information about the program, anyone can apply for for their structure, thing is that some of these structures are ours. Like the the, well, we don't own railroad bridge, but I don't think the Michigan Department of Transportation is going to apply for historical marker for their ski bridges. Um, so yeah, some of these are private, some of them are public, the idea is that we would work to get ours. Ours in the process, we we fill out an application, we send the information, they have to review it to make it actually historically. Of significance, uh, for private property owners, this this leaves it open of, hey. Dexter Cider Mill, you have the oldest operating cider mill in the entire state of Michigan, we think that's pretty cool. We think you should go and apply to get a historical marker, here's the path to how to do it. Or if you want us to help with it, let us know.
So. These are intended to be. Public sites that. For the historic mark.
There there's a a mix of both.
I think he's suggesting that there's there's both public and private, and that it could be pursued. Either way, depending on how how the funding falls. I know, I know that Bev Hill. On our Arts Culture and Heritage Group. Has been very interested in this and wanted to move this forward once the bicentennial.
But we as a public entity can designate private.
We could, we could start the application process just like anybody else.
For public property.
For both.
And we can encourage private property owners.
Well, Michigan Central Railroad. Forest Lawn Cemetery are not either. Our property.
Right, nor is the Dexter Cider Mill.
Nor is the Dexter Cider Mill.
I think he's just, I think he's just pointing out that there's several, there's there's definite places. Of historic significance in the region worthy of. Somebody talking to them, whether whether it's us applying or them applying, it's all under our. Under the overall framework, that it'd be neat to have them have the the markers. I'm, tell me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, no, that that that's correct assumption, and and the idea is that if we bring in a whole bunch of these and say this is our two hundredth year. Here are all our significant things, it's a lot. Lot easier, they're looking through the stuff, they're doing the stuff at the same time versus. A hodgepodge popping up here and there, and uh. So some some folks may have some questions, how can the deck, the Bell Road Bridge get this designation? There there are provisions in the act and through how it's been administered, that sites that have been destroyed can be commemorated ten years after they've been destroyed, so that the mills that we've got. Um, on the other side of Mill Creek, um, can be commemorated, because it's been more than ten years since they've been destroyed. The bridge may not happen yet, um. But yeah, the the idea is that these are. A mix of private, public, and private, and and uh, we want, we want our public body to start working at it.
Yeah, I mean, there 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 could be homes that. Meet this designation that are listed here.
Right, so.
And we we have so many that could qualify, I mean, I mean, this would be two pages long, if I can try to.
No, I'm trying to figure out what the intent is.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And so does this have anything to do with uh, historic district?
No, these are the little markers that say on, this is something that's important that happened here.
Okay.
Thank you, there's no historic designation, they just put a green sign up. And you can choose whether or not it's two sided or one sided, if it's two sided, they want. And you can choose whether or not it's two-sided or one-sided, if it's two-sided, they want you to have different text on both sides.
Yeah, it's green and yellow.
It has a little old rain on top. And you don't have to have, I mean, if you choose not to go through the process.
Oh yeah, somebody doesn't want, they don't have to, yeah, yeah, right, we're not forcing anybody, this is not forcing anybody, you're just suggesting that we only have two and there's many.
Look, I'll tell you the.
Who'd you talk, do you mind?
Uh Cheryl.
Cheryl, okay.
But you you, people come all the way out here for that, sorry, you put that little sign up, that's that gets the picture. That then they tag location and spreads.
Other questions on the motion by Councilmember Michelle, seconded by Kristen?
Jamie. Yes, uh, so I think though, I just wanna be sure, um, so initial is being added, I'm on the backside of this, so the. The one to the fourth pair, oh wait.
The first, the only now therefore be resolved.
Now therefore, yeah, provide initial guidance, but then also uh under the next paragraph, be it further resolved, the third line. And provide guidance on appropriateness for commemoration, maybe if we wanna add initial guidance there.
Yeah.
I think that would be.
Sure, we can put it there as well.
Consistent, and then where was the other place where it was mentioned?
It's already initial down under the.
Oh, initial findings, right, okay, so I had two more initials, and then I just wanted, uh, per the, my calendar, um. Our first meeting will be November eleventh in November, so I think ACH will meet twice. Just for what it's worth, they'll meet in.
Remind me when they meet?
First Wednesday.
First of.
Yeah, so they'll, yeah, so they'll have an October and a November meeting before this.
Yes, the second and the sixth.
Yeah, whether we can actually get that into the packet.
Imagine it, it could be a supplement.
Um, or we can hold the packet.
Technically, we do meet um on on that um Wednesday, the sixth. But since the election is the day before and sometimes the work of the election continues. Generally, the meeting on the November sixth is moved, that's why we potentially only have one meeting.
Gotcha, makes sense. Okay, see no further comments, Justin, please call the vote to approve the vote that made by Councilmember Michelle's.
Aldag?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Schla?
Yes.
Semafaro?
Yes.
Kyo?
Yes. If it passes or carries. Uh, new business item or last new business item, M two is discussion of passport processing services. I forget who added this could be a future council member item, but we have thought it forth today, right, was an information.
Yep.
Um, was that you that?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know if you wanna.
Well, yeah, no, no, my my thoughts initially for bringing this up is in my day job. Uh, the corp there has started possible, and some, and really likes it, likes that people are gonna come in, they're depending, they're traveling. And since we've put three million dollars into this facility, I thought it would be good for us to buy additional services. Now, this is different from renewals, you don't come into these processing centers for renewals, this is just. You're getting your your passport for the first time, so the high school kids come in, I think that'd be pretty awesome. I am sad to hear that Celine had a bad experience. Maybe we're a bit harder to find for Ann Arbor folks up here on the other side of the railroad that may discourage it, um. I I do have a question, is there any commitment period, if we sign up and it goes south after three months, do we have to keep that up for a whole year, is it just, we're, we can tag out?
Uh, that that I don't know, I have to look. Um, I I I do know that you you do have to apply to the program and be accepted. Um, and I I, in my, in our research, um, at one point, they weren't accepting any additional, um. App uh facilities in our area. Now with Celine not doing it anymore, I don't know if that opens up one or how they, you know. Make their selection um of who can and who, you know, what areas have enough, have a sufficient number. Um, but you do have to apply and be be accepted to to be a facility.
Yes, it's no, it's all talking, I I wouldn't.
I just have one question. So the. Do do we understand what kind of equipments needed to do this?
No.
That might, that might be a reader, a topic to research, I know you need a wall, you know, if you can take pictures.
You send them to Walgreens. Walgreens has the thing and it checks to make sure your head is the right size and your head is the right angle.
Okay, so we wouldn't do everything in one spot, then, that's, okay.
So, um.
Is different than what I'm thinking.
When, when I was at Troy, uh, we did um passport, um, pictures and payment. I I didn't get to see the uh. The the process of of uh receiving the the full application and reviewing it, but I do know that like, um, city Troy. Uh, had a camera that, or a very specific camera that um allowed you to um take the pictures and then it would send it to a printer and it would. Have the right paper to print it out, um. But a- at that point, you had to, you had to do pictures and payment in two different locations with, it it could be within the same building, but it had to be in two different like. Segregated offices, um, I I don't know if that is still the case, this is, you know, more than ten years ago at this point.
I am by no means a little traveler, but I got my passport at the Ann Arbor main post office, it's listed at the top of that list on the last page of the packet. And I'm pretty sure we had everything done right there, they were extremely efficient at it. I mean, other than the line that's always in that post office, because it's just generally busy. Once you got to the counter, they were really quick at getting you through submitting. You know, you filled out stuff ahead of time, the picture and the payment, I don't remember being, taking very long there, you know. But I would be interested to know what, what else we have to purpose or obtain there. Yes, sir.
I I would be interested to know what the hope had to be. I mean, I would not be in favor of obviously hiring a full-time person or something like this. I am guessing that we don't have somebody who has twenty hours a week even, or ten hours a week, most likely. I don't know if it's multiple people that would do it or I didn't handle that.
I mean, I I know, um, one of, one of the issues that Celine ran into was that, um, they they tried to. Um, stick to appointment-based schedule, um, it seemed like that didn't work out super well for them. Um, but, uh, I mean, if, depending on the number and. How long it takes to process, I mean, there there's potential to to have somebody come in the office part-time. And and that be one of their responsibilities.
Yeah, you'd set hours.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah.
Or or by by appointment, you know, if if you make an appointment at nine, and we have that person come in at nine to to be there for that appointment.
Well, that was sort of gonna be my question, I mean, could, could you do it on certain days?
Yes.
Like one day a week, but.
Okay, well, you'll get the answers to some of those questions and bring some more information back to us.
Hello.
Okay, anybody else have anything? Okay, we're back around a non-arranged participation. We've had a couple of people join us online since then, is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak this evening? Is there anyone online that would like to speak this evening, so please raise your hand, or use the raise hand feature? Hey, we have no, no non-arranged participation, council comments, Olivia, anything to add?
I do not have anything.
Okay, Joe?
No, no comments, thank you.
Okay, wow.
Nope, nothing.
Zach?
If I'd known my comments I'm next to were gonna make in the minutes, I would have detailed that it's primarily because they have a single-party system, not necessarily because of the amendments. So instead of having the different branches fighting against each other, they're all kind of enriching their own pockets. Um, I would caution staff from using the verb stuffed in ballot anywhere in the same vicinity. I I know it's used lightly, but packing the ballot envelopes or something going out, because people are really sensitive and anxious to the, on that. Um, that's it.
Thank you, Jerry?
Yeah, sure, uh, tried to type a few things up here, so. Bear with me. I just want this to be on the record, um, so regarding my involvement with the Friends of Mill Creek. Park Ball Propposal Committee, particularly its formation and initial stages. I've been on council almost four years now, I think everybody here at this table knows, and many people in the community know that in my role on council. And not to say that you have not done this in your roles, but personally, in my role on council, I have passionately pursued the role of resident advocate. Particularly when it comes to topics that some might consider to be uncomfortable. So, most likely, when I have reached out and asked a question. That has made people feel uncomfortable, it's because a resident has come directly to me with that question. And I said, hey, I'm on council, I feel like that is my job to get this question answered for you. And recognizing the small size of our community, the interconnectedness of our community, I. Intentionally and regularly do not necessarily share the identity of the people asking those questions, because. I don't think that's necessary, the question exists on its own and the answer to it should be provided regardless of who's asking the question. So whether this has been me, you know, sort of repeatedly asking staff questions about ordinance enforcement. Or asking staff questions about their communications with residents via the website, whether it comes to posting of meeting minutes. Or questions about whether certain council members are still eligible for the role on council. Nearly all of those, I mean, I can't think of all of them, but nearly all of those times, it is because a resident has come to me with that question. But I can understand why, when it is me asking those questions, somebody might easily think that question is coming from Jamie. It's not coming from anybody else, it's only coming from Jamie, Jamie is always asking these questions, um. And so I just wanna let everybody in the community, everybody here at this table know, that yes, I was part of the formation of that ballot proposal committee. I was not. Motivated necessarily to pursue that to the end. Until in the middle of the night, after a late council meeting. A resident reached out to me and said, almost verbatim, is there a way that residents can petition council? Is there a, is there a petition? And I said, funny you should mention it, this committee has been created. My personal effort in that. Then was fortified knowing that there were residents who had that desire, I didn't put that desire in any other resident's head. Until it became clear that there were residents who already were looking for that outlet, and. It's not difficult. To understand that the number of people in any given community who understand the mechanisms for. Taking this action is probably small, and it probably draws from the people who are already involved. So I think it's just, I think it's just really unfair to attribute, you know, nefarious dishonest motives. To somebody who uses the resources they have available to them to advocate for residents. And I want to, I guess, publicly thank all the residents who have entrusted me. With their questions and their concerns, because it has been a great honor. To advocate for them, and again, I am not saying this because I think nobody else here is doing this, I just wanna make it very clear that. I so value those residents and their support over the years, I have a few meetings left, and. The hardest part about stepping away from this is. Knowing that I'm not going to be able to advocate for them at this table, but that doesn't mean I'm not going to be able to advocate for them in other ways, and so. I guess, thank you to all the residents, um, and thank you to all of you for bearing with me, regardless of what you've thought about my efforts. Um, I appreciate the work that you do here.
Thank you. Appreciate the work you do.
Um, yeah, the only um comment I have is that, um. As, sometimes my husband likes to say, I'm not a lawyer and I don't play one in TV. So there are questions at times that I ask that is genuinely questions of adding to my knowledge. I don't have a. Private, you know, lawyer to ask these questions, so I do ask them here, and sometimes. It is in the hope that if somebody else in the community has those questions. That they're answered, I learned from. Very early on. That no question is a stupid question. So when I ask a question and I hear mumbling of profanities from a council member next to me. It's very disheartening.
It's not me.
No, it was not you, sorry, to my right. Um, it was disheartening and, um, especially of somebody who wants to. Be a representative of people in the city, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, do we have any items to add to the proposed agenda items for future meetings list?
Zach? Uh, pear tree replacement downtown, all the trees down in those wells there look to be Bradford pears, which are about five years overdue to die or fall apart. When when storm or snow hits, uh, also in the city-owned property. Um, around base two of Mill Creek. There are tons of fragmites, acres and acres and acres of them, and they're an invasive species, and our. Our plans say that we want to not have invasive species, so probably starting to talk how we can get rid of those.
Justin, when's the last time we did a burn?
Uh, it's been four years since we've done a burn, but but actually Josh has done a little bit of research on on the fragmites all already.
Okay, maybe you can bring that back for. Or do I go now? I'm okay with it now, you guys, you're ready?
Oh, just the real quick thing I was gonna throw out there is I have been in contact with plant wise to start talking about potential programming, um, especially along the trail section. Um, in the south of the park, so it is something I'm currently looking at, it's a couple of different grants I'm looking at potentially to help pursue to help, um. Tackle that sooner rather than later.
I would love, see, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Looking at this list, and um, we have ice cream competitors. I'm looking at this on page twenty-four, just in your, you know, potential topics, if we are gonna discuss that. We should probably discuss that sooner rather than later, if it's gonna have anything to do with this year, I don't know if anyone has that intent, but. Throw you on as a discussion there, just to see if we have any thoughts about it, might be the thing to do in the next meeting or two.
I.
Well, then, never mind. No, it's all good, but with that in mind, when do you do that?
Uh, right, well, this time.
Okay, so then.
Just gotta discount this year because we're a little early.
Right, so then I guess, I don't know if we.
I I.
Make note of that.
Well, and 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 I I I I I I have asked the intern to um take a look into, um. So some old, uh, all potential alternatives, like, well, what are some other ideas to bring to the table to to generate discussion?
Yeah, I mean, with that said, it's not, I guess, not that sensitive, like I was saying, but definitely before. We are in this position again.
And so they'll stay on there, I guess, then? All right, well.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, we'll see promotion for adjournment at eight forty-nine. Moved by Semafaro. Anybody wanna second, seconded by Hubbard, thank you, all, all in favor, signify by saying hi, please.
Hi, hi.
Have a great evening, everyone.
Thank you.
Happy fall.
Yeah.
It is. Whenever Michigan rushes for two hundred ninety-one yards.